Good evening. We call the meeting the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting properly advertised?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I saw this Bishop Benton, if you come please and lead us in our invocation and our pledge. Let's please stand for the invocation and our pledge.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to all of our board and to all of our citizens. Let us look to the Lord. Our Father and our God, we want to take a moment and thank you for this day that you have made. We are choosing to rejoice and be glad in it. We ask that you would continue to look upon our county as a whole, and thank you for blessing us to live in a place, Father, with peace and tranquility. So we ask now, Father, that you would continue to bless each one of our commissioners and the districts over which they preside. We give you thanks for these things, and we ask it now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir. This is our agenda calls for us to approve our minutes for the month of October, October 3rd and October 19th.
Can I make a motion? We approve the minutes?
Our second.
Secondly, we approve the minutes for October 3rd and 19th. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Approve. Let me say this, Commissioner Walden is out, he's under the weather, and Commissioner Fraser should be on the way shortly, which is on our meeting. All right, Mr. Brown, the award presentations and proclamations. We've got some guests here tonight. ACCG Wellness Grant is first. Where's Ms. Laura? I know she's there. Ah, there she is. All right.
Hello, we welcome Ben Pittorelli from ACCG, the Association of County Commissions of Georgia, and he is presenting our 2023 Health Promotion Grant Award in the amount of $8,500 to support employee health promotion.
All right. He said he had 10 seconds of wisdom to share with us.
I have 10 seconds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, boards. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to come down here. It's always a pleasure to be around a county that gets it when it comes to wellness. When you talk about risk management and property liability and making sure that you, you know, avoid having accidents and everything else to keep your costs down, wellness is what you do for health insurance. And the program that your staff has put together and has continued to provide to your employees over the years is a shining example that we use all the time in our training. This is the 17th year continuously that you all have received this grant, and it comes to a total of $8,500 this year, but the grand total for Liberty County is $93,000 over the years.
Wow.
Please, please keep doing what you're doing.
You will, as long as we have Ms. Laura. If you would come do a picture. Everybody's in? All right.
On the count of three, say Liberty County proud.
Liberty County proud. Liberty County proud. Congratulations. Proclamation, America Recycle Day, Dr. Karen Bell.
Excuse me, but I do have a short report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before I let Karen up here. But I wanted to present a report on our recent health fair. The health fair is the anchor event of our Live Well Employee Health and Wellness Program, and we'd like to recognize our community partners who supported the event. As you know, the wellness program is a valuable benefit to our employees. It's an investment in our employees, and we see the rewards we reap every day, and it's made possible by the grant that Mr. Pittorelli just awarded us. In this year's event, we had a great turnout. Once again, over three days, we accomplished 150 biometric screenings. That's cholesterol, blood sugar, blood pressure, things like that. 128 immunizations, so that's from flu shots to COVID shots to shingle shots. And then the hospital offered extended blood work panels, and we had two-thirds of participants take advantage of those. And those included screenings for breast cancer, prostate cancer, measured vitamin D levels, A1C, iron, and hemoglobin. And all of the costs for those, which the hospital offered at, you know, minimum at-cost rates, were covered by the grant. And in addition to the medical screenings, we were able to provide mental health support, fitness and nutrition education and resources, and massage therapy services. And the success of this event is due to professionals throughout Liberty County who are willing to offer their time and expertise. And by working together, we know we are making a difference in our community's health and well-being. So, on behalf of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank the following: community partners who provided outstanding support to our 2023 Employee Health Fair, and we have a certificate of appreciation for you. And first and foremost is Liberty Regional Medical Center. You would please come up and take a photo with us?
Give them a hand.
We have Prandall and Skirls, Mia Wilson, and Walter Jackson here, who were instrumental in providing all of the biometric screenings and blood work. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liberty County.
There you go. Thank you so much. The immunizations were provided by Heinzville Pharmacy. They could not be here tonight, but I told them they'd still get the shout-out. Low Country Eye Care, did Christina make it? Okay, they were here for Vision Health. UGA Extension Office, Ms. Gypsy Tartt was here, but she's at a conference this week. And Premier Counseling Services. Darcy Black and Associates. Positive Change Fitness. Ms. Lenisha Cunningham. There you go. Thank you for being here. Thank you. And finally, Rhythm of Touch. I don't think she was able to make it either, but I do want to thank all of these wonderful organizations and businesses, and we look forward to working with them again in the future.
Thank you all. All right. Dr. Bell, now, we know those of you who maybe want to be excused, so we will allow you to be excused if you opt to at this time. But certainly, we love having company, so you're welcome to stay. Yes, you got 10 minutes of wisdom, too?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Karen Bell, the executive director for Keep Little Beautiful. I'm here with my chairman. What did you want to say your name?
Willa Lewis.
And we're here for American Recycles Day. One thing that we would like to know Liberty County community to know is that recycling is something everyone, everyone, from the little ones up to the older ones, can participate. You can start with one item. You don't have to go out and try to do everything at once. By just starting with either paper, cardboard, or a can, you can start recycling and helping our environment.
Proclamation for America Recycle Day in Liberty County. Whereas Liberty County recognizes the importance of protecting and preserving our natural resources and adopting conscientious habits that will improve our daily lives and bring about a cleaner, economical, and more sustainable environment. And whereas although there has been a significant increase in the amount of recycling in the Liberty County to date, with the national recycling rate reaching 34%, we must also continue to focus on our initiatives such as waste reduction, composting, the reuse of product and materials, and purchasing recycled products. And whereas by encouraging businesses, state agencies, nonprofit organizations, schools, and individuals to celebrate America Recycles Day 2023, we can further promote recycling as a daily, environmentally efficient, and economically smart habit. And whereas state and community leaders can help encourage recycling by informing citizens about local recycling options, they can also help foster greater awareness of the need to expand collection programs by promoting the benefit of recycling for the environment and all of its inhabitants. And whereas it is important that all Liberty County residents become involved in recycling activities and learn more about the many environmentally friendly recycled and recyclable products available to them as consumers, it is also fitting for Liberty County to celebrate America Recycles Day 2023 and take action by educating citizens and businesses about the recycling options available in our community. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize November 15th, 2023, as America Recycles Day in Liberty County, Georgia, resolved the 7th day of November, 2023.
Sir, I have one more thing to say, if possible, before I'm called to the top up there. Because it was mentioned by Commissioner Gillar at our last meeting, I wanted to make known that Liberty County, for Rivers Alive, we have a certificate of participation, and this is to be known, that Rivers Alive, our countywide cleanup event, that Liberty County had the most volunteers over Heinzville.
Now, he wins either way it goes.
But I wanted him to know that. I think you scared him and made him come out. So we appreciate it.
Good, good.
Can we come up now?
Yeah, come on.
No, you don't.
Now, let him hold it.
I'll probably be fired tomorrow.
Thank you. National GIS Day, Mr. Clint Stanley and Company.
Evening. I'm here to ask that you sign a resolution to proclaim November the 15th as National GIS Day, and I'm not going to get up here and act like I know what it's all about. I brought Mr. Scott Wall, who's with our Liberty County Tax Assessor's Office, and he's going to tell you what it's all about. So, Scott?
Morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I provided you all with the flyer up there. So basically, next Wednesday, November the 15th, from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m., we will be doing GIS Day up here. We're going to have a map gallery, plus we're going to have a couple demonstrations of some of the maps and services that we do provide throughout the county. Also have Ms. Wintsey Poon here from the CRC, and she should be also here doing some presentation. If you look on the back of the flyer provided, we have presentations throughout the day, a couple demonstrations from local and other counties surrounding. And one key one here, we're bringing back Mr. Jared Perchard, who was the GIS analyst for the county, and he moved up to Beaufort, I believe, or Bluffton. And he's coming back in to do a presentation for us that day. We're also going to have some historical maps from the Historical Society. They're bringing some maps in, and we're going to have those up here. Some maps that probably none of you all have seen, so I ask you all to come on out and look at some of that. And also, we have the sandbox that we provide every year, which everybody has a lot of fun with that also, too. And with that, unless you have anything to add?
One last thing is, if you know what GIS Day is, we would love to see you. If you don't know what GIS is, you should come learn what GIS is.
Thank you. All right. Brown?
This is proclamation for National Geographic Information System Day. Whereas the Geographic Information System, GIS, integrates hardware, software, and data for capturing, managing, analyzing, and displaying all forms of geographically referenced information. And whereas GIS is an important part of geography awareness by allowing us to view, understand, question, interpret, and visualize data in many ways that reveal relationships, patterns, and trends in the form of maps, globes, reports, and charts. And whereas National Geographic Information Systems Day is November 15th, 2023. And whereas geography awareness week promotes geographic literacy in schools. And whereas Liberty County is committed to expanding GIS to the schools and general public in order to showcase real-world applications with GIS that helps answer questions and solve problems by looking at data in a way that is quickly understood and easily shared. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 15th, 2023, as National Geographic Information Systems Day in Liberty County, Georgia, and urge all citizens to participate in the GIS activities planned in Liberty County and Heinzville, Georgia. In witness whereof, I unto set my hand and cause the great seal of Liberty County to be affixed the 7th day of November in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Scott, while you're standing there, I think you may, you know, Wintsey said to come and learn, but while you're here, just give the audience one example of what you guys do that they would have no idea that GIS is part of that process.
As far as a lot of people don't realize, but all the mapping that we do in the office, we basically take all the survey plans that are provided through the clerk's office, and we apply that to the map, and we built a, from the ground up, the Prism 2.0 system, which is related to all of our assessor's office records, and also all the other systems such as zoning, other maps like that, elections. Elections going on today, you can go up on Elections Map, and you see where's your districts, where your voting districts, and everything else like that. So, basically, that's in a nutshell what we provide.
A little bit of it. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Now, come on up now and get your...
All right.
We're moving slow.
Let's see how they're moving. Sir? I am. I should be out coaching right now.
He always says, get in front.
There you go. Thank you guys.
Thank you all. Uh, historical cultural grants.
Commissioner, let's just go down for this one, because we've got several folk coming our way, so let's just go down.
Right now?
Yes.
Here we go.
Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, um, over the last couple of special purpose local option sales tax programs, you've authorized, and the community has approved, the, uh, distribution of funds related to historical cultural purposes in Liberty County. These are given out on somewhat of a competitive basis through an application. So this year, out of the news flash, uh, the committee has met, and y'all approved these awards actually at your last meeting, so we're here to actually present a large check and the real thing. So these are fifty percent proceeds that'll go for those specified projects that qualify under law. And then as those invoices are submitted back for work achieved on the project, they'll receive the other fifty percent. And the first one of those is Dorchester Civic Center.
Should not. I'm trying to. And this is, can we say Dorchester on three? One, two, three? Alright.
And the next one is to Hinesville Area Arts Council. The next one is ITPA, that's the Independent Telecom Pioneer Association.
Thank you.
Yep, sure, thank you. Okay, ready? One, two, three. I couldn't, I, I, we're working this.
Uh, Liberty County Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Liberty County Historical Society. Is that here? I saw Mr. Randy yesterday. I think he said he had to be out some. Midway Museum. Seabrook Village. Somebody made it from Seabrook. Yes, sir. And then Veterans Memorial Walk. If there was anybody here from there. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Brian Combs on the count of three. One, two, three.
Brian Combs.
Alright, Chamber on three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
That's alright. I'm gonna get you back, buddy. But as soon as she comes in, I'm going to work her in.
Alright, Public Hearing Twenty Twenty-Three Milage. Chair, entertain the motion to go into public hearing.
Don't move, Ms. Chair.
Second.
All in favor, show your hands, please. We're now in the public hearing to discuss our milage. Proposed milage.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to present the twenty-twenty-three proposed milage rate for the county. A summary of the proposed milage rate has been posted on our website and advertised in the newspaper. I would like to start this presentation by explaining the milage rate process and providing a little more information for our constituents about the county that they live in. Uh, Liberty County covers an area of five hundred and forty-two square miles, has a population of over sixty-five thousand, um, as of the most recent census. The county, along with other local governments, uh, have a need to generate revenue to fund things like law enforcement, public safety. Um, some of these endeavors include our Sheriff's Department, uh, the jail, fire services, EMS. Protecting our citizens is definitely a priority of the county. Other services the county provides for its citizens include public parks, recreation programs, solid waste services, um, maintaining the highways and streets, uh, planning and zoning, these are just to name a few. For the county, property tax revenue is one of our largest sources of revenue. Property taxes include, um, an annual tax to its citizens on the real property, like residential homes, uh, commercial buildings, farming and agricultural land, as well as tangible personal property, um, such as vehicles. Each year, the Tax Assessor's Office determines the current value of all the property, real and personal, located within the county, um, and issues a consolidated digest. The Board of Commissioners, uh, you all then determine, uh, and approve and vote upon a milage rate for each calendar year. By definition, a milage rate is the rate at which property taxes are levied on a property. The combination of the property's value for the current year and the milage rate approved determines the amount of property taxes that each person will pay within the county. These taxes are billed by the Tax Commissioner's Office, um, usually around the end of the calendar year. This slide shows the detail for the tax, for the current tax digest and those of the past three years. Uh, the twenty-twenty-three countywide digest value, net of exemptions, increased twenty-five point six percent, or four hundred and ninety-two million from the prior year total. Um, I have also included a breakdown for the city of Hinesville, and the unincorporated and other areas of the county. Um, also, these two areas segregated, uh, the city of Hinesville and the unincorporated, also, these two areas segregated, uh, the city of Hinesville and the unincorporated areas, both saw increases of twenty-five percent, um, in their net digest as well. The next slide depicts a breakdown of the digest growth for the city of Hinesville, the unincorporated areas, and countywide. As I mentioned, the total growth in this year's digest countywide from last year was four hundred and ninety-two point one million. Real growth made up almost eighty-three percent of this total growth for the year, and our reassessed growth was seventeen percent. The next slide depicts a breakdown of the, oops, the digest growth, I think I skipped one. Okay. Okay, excuse me. Although the county experienced, um, growth of twenty-five percent, the countywide exemptions grew this year by even more. Total countywide exemptions increased from three hundred and eighty-one million in twenty-twenty-two to five hundred and fifty-seven million in twenty-twenty-three. This is an increase of forty-six percent. This is an unprecedented, precedent-ed increase for the county. This chart shows how the exemptions have been trending over the last few years, and this year, it spiked. Our three largest exemptions, shown on the right of this page right here, are, uh, Freeport, the, um, disabled veteran exemption, and the KDW local freeze. These three alone make up eighty percent of the town, county's total exemptions. Uh, one more thing I want to point out about exemptions is that most of these only apply to the county, um, or to counties in Georgia, um, and so they are not, um, taxed at the city, or we don't recognize them at the city and the Board of Education level. So that's just something that kind of stands out for the county, um, that reduces our tax base. And most of them are, uh, imposed by Georgia law, but there are some that, um, are elected for this county. The Service Delivery Strategies Act, um, plays a, an, a role in the property's, the county's property tax billing collection. The state law requires that we back out the effect of any duplicated services, so each resident is not taxed twice. And since the majority of our citizens within the county live in the city of Hinesville, we, um, and the city also has their own tax rate, we back out, uh, certain items from our budget to not allow the duplicated services to be taxed twice. Um, this is a listing of these duplicated services we identified for FY twenty-four budget year. Um, and the largest is fire protection, because the city also has their own fire department. The next slide shows the trend of the county's general fund budget for the last five years. Um, as the county expands its services, uh, service areas, population, our budget tends to increase. As the slide notes, our budget generally increased, uh, in the current year by the same percentage almost as it did in the year before. Um, you'll see on our slide forthcoming what those increases are for this current year. Um, there are also things that drive up the county's budget in addition to growth. And one example for this is the cost of property insurance that the county, uh, realized in twenty-twenty, um, the budget year twenty twenty-four. Uh, this was at no fault of our own. This was just the insurance companies increasing the rates for, uh, for the county and other coastal counties in the state of Georgia. Another cost is for our implementation of a salary study that basically raised the scale to market for our employee base. This was determined to be necessary to offer competitive wages in an effort to retain our employees. Another increase was due to inflation for prices of, uh, for contracts such as, the jail experienced a increase in contracted services for providing inmate healthcare. And this is certainly another item that's outside of the county's control. Uh, the last item on the slide shows an increase in the FY twenty-four budget for other financing uses. Uh, what this represents is that the county budgeted to use some fund balance, some equity, um, of about eight hundred thousand dollars last year to balance the budget at milage time. Governments are cautioned on using fund balance for operational purposes because this money is not replenished, it's not regenerated. Uh, the remaining largest portion of this variance, um, was an unexpected increase in funding the pension plan in the previous year, um, that totaled right around a million dollars. So we had to account for that out of our fund balance. Um, also, things that are not included here specifically include our inflationary and operational cost increases, um, experienced by the county, not only, but, uh, nationwide. Um, I'm sure everyone here has seen the rise in costs of food and, uh, other consumer products, substantially, uh, over the last few years. Lastly, the county approved certain positions in the prior budget, so the FY twenty-three budget, that were only half-year funded, uh, positions that started effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. And now that we've moved into FY twenty-four, we have to fund those, um, employees for the whole year. The proposed milage rate, so this year the county has broken down its proposed milage rate into certain segments, um, as a way to illustrate some of the services we provide and, uh, assign, uh, the milage rate to those. There are many counties, um, within Georgia that adopt their milage rate in a similar manner. Uh, we feel that this provides more information to the county residents to better understand the milage rate as a whole. Um, this is the milage rate breakdown as proposed that is needed to support the FY twenty-four budget, um, that you will have adopted. This is also what we have posted on our website and advertised in the newspaper. Um, there are a couple of assumptions that we used in calculating this milage rate that I want to point out. Um, this milage rate assumes collection of the property taxes, uh, for the twenty-twenty-three tax year of ninety-eight percent. Um, and in speaking with the Tax Commissioner and his, um, department, uh, we were, we, we know that this is a, a, a good, um, baseline. Also, the milage rate includes, um, this milage rate includes a budget reduction for our FY twenty-four budget for, um, approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand that was approved for new fire personnel. Um, we have realized that we're not going to be able to staff, uh, our vacancies as well as, um, bring in as many fire personnel as we had anticipated. Using the proposed milage rate on the previous slide, this chart, uh, shows the calculated increase for the property taxes for a residential home with a value of a hundred and fifty thousand, as well as that with a value of two hundred and fifty thousand for both the, uh, the residents of the city of Hinesville and the unincorporated areas. The monthly tax increase for a resident with a home value of a hundred and fifty thousand is nineteen dollars a month. This increases to around thirty-one dollars a month for those properties that are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would like to point out, however, that this calculation does not take into account any exemptions, um, such as your home sit exemption, disabled veteran, et cetera. And that's all I have for you, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Ms. Samantha before we engage the public? I'd just like, and y'all help me, uh, Ms. Samantha and Joey, um, walk the public through so how, how we got here. The, the process works, uh, as much as possible this way. We, uh, a couple of months ago, you send out, um, requests, uh, to each department to indicate what they may need to run the departments effectively and efficiently.
Yes, sir.
That includes those departments under Mr. Brown's umbrella, as well as those in the Justice Center, that's the sheriff and, uh, magistrate, all those offices over there, they have the have to also submit there. So they submit those, and then there's a screening process where we sit down and we screen, and we get the, like in school, we get the red pen out, you know, and we go through it, commissioners do, and then we go through it again, and sometimes we go through it again. Then when the digest figures come in, we can get to see what the digest was allowed us to do, and sometimes we go through it again, trying to make the numbers work. So we don't just come here arbitrarily today. By the time you see this, we've already had all those departments bring their reports to us of what they think they'll need, and we have done a pretty good job of screening them and telling a lot of people, no, there's requests. And listen, and I want to say this publicly because some of them are here. I'm not saying they send fluffed-up reports. When they come, they come in their hearts being sincere, what they need to run the departments. But sitting where we sit and knowing there's a public observation process, as well as what our dollars are, we try to make sure that we, if we can defer something, we do. Sometimes it's yes, no, sometimes it's trying to combine some efforts. So there's a multiplicity of things we do, trying to make sure that the budget is balanced. So that's kind of how we got here. So don't think we just got here today with Samantha's report. There's been quite a process of screening everybody's requests. And I see Ms. Erica, she had called you out, but now I'm wondering, so when she sends her request through, it's a sincere request from her department. It's my department, oh, I see some others here, too. So they all go through that process, so they're here tonight to go through this process with us. I just want the general public to know, I hope I did a fair job of how we arrived at this point.
Yes, sir. I just want to point out one more thing. On our original budgets, when we started going through that budget process, review process, we cut about a million dollars from those original requests countywide. And then these additional personnel requests has brought us up to one point six million of budget cuts from our original request. So I just kind of, we have made great efforts to try to reduce it as far as we could.
And those things could include copiers and personnel, of course, just stuff to run their office, run their respective departments. We have to go through and try to work this out, so. And then you mentioned, I hope that was clear, Liberty County is an exemption-rich county. What does that mean? We have a lot of things to provide exemptions for. You might want to put that slide up there. Again, we have to, that's a slice out of the pie, we have to pick off top, because we provide exemptions, it's the KDW, as well as this list of things. And she says some are done by local legislation, some done by what the state requires, but we have to provide those exemptions, so. So even though the digest may grow, you have to compensate for the exemptions you have to provide to people. So when you all go to Ms. Glenda's office and fill out those exemption paperwork, it shows up here in the numbers here.
Mr. Chairman, I would hope, you know, that everyone that takes advantage of the KDW, if you're a homeowner, should be able to take advantage of that exemption yourself. But on the other, I had another question, Mr. Chairman, just before we move on, so the audience would know, and also if the newspaper picks up. But on the one slide, the general budget history has not actually increased that much, the percentage-wise. Yeah, I don't know if you want to go back to that, but anyway, it had not increased that much, but the exemptions increased because of, you know, Freeport, obviously, and then the disabled vet and the KDW, and I don't want to harp on that a whole lot, but that's where a lot of the increase in the millage is coming from, is because the budget we pretty much have held. It's only increased just a little bit.
Our exemptions definitely outpaced our growth.
But it's the exemptions that have increased. Just for my clarification, and I know you've told me before, when we look at the exemptions, is that how much taxes would have been collected, or is that how much the value of the home?
This is the value of the properties.
The properties.
Property value, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we see what the properties are that were, that are exempt, left on the table, the money is left on the table, and we have to tax on what we've got.
Yep.
And I think overall, our department heads, our elected officials, they've held the line on their budget, because you can go back to the slide, we have not increased the budget, but very, very little.
Yes, correct. They definitely did their, did a great job.
And it's just, and those exemptions are statewide, other than KDW.
Freeport.
In Freeport. Freeport.
And I'll say this, so unexpected, every time we think we have come to a place where we can just keep the budget flat, then there's an unexpected occurrence, i.e. the insurance.
Pension, the insurance, yes, sir.
One point eight million dollars. What was it before, the old seven? I'm trying to think of the old number before the insurance jumped up to the one point eight. I'm sorry, there's been an increase, she said, because we're a coastal county, now we haven't paid a large amount of funds to cover the county's properties. And certainly, I hope you want to know that the county's properties are covered with the insurance, but that's out of our control, out of our control.
Right.
All right. Anybody else before I open it up to the?
Ms. Samantha, so actually, Freeport has jumped, what is it, eighty-six?
The Freeport exemption, yes, has jumped to eighty-six million, yes.
It went from one seventy-seven to two sixty-four.
Mr. Brown, can you or Ms. Samantha explain to the audience what Freeport is? Okay, but there, you may know, but somebody else may not, okay? So let him explain. Thank you.
Certainly do it. It's a basic exemption established by vote of a public in a county that exempts portions or all of goods manufactured by a local industry, basically. All but seven counties, well, all counties in Georgia enjoy Freeport. All but seven counties in Georgia offer a hundred Freeport, hundred percent Freeport. There are different levels of goods and services, level one through level four, which are different types of services that are exempted by large, other than about six counties. All of the counties that I mentioned have an exemption on levels one through three. Level four is something that the county just put on, or county's just put on, when, losing my, e-commerce facilities, thank you, what was established. And then there are probably, without looking at the map, I've got, there are probably fifteen to twenty of those counties in Georgia that do offer a level four, which is e-commerce.
Chairman, Joey, when you say manufactured, that would be the local industry that does manufacturing in Liberty County would be DK's, Elbow Interstate Paper, that's, that would be one of them?
Kimtow.
What's the name of that?
SNF.
Kimtow.
SNF would be a large holder of the report because of values of goods on hand.
But that's, is that the only two manufacturers that we have here in the county?
I don't know all of them.
Okay.
Large portion. Can you imagine?
I think that's about the only two manufacturers.
If, for the reason where the new name is now, I can't think of it. It's got a new name. All right. All right. Now, all right, thank you. At this time, Mr. Brown, we didn't do a sign-up sheet, did we?
We did not.
All right. Who wants to, who wants to come and address the commission? Mr. Sprinkle has his pin up, come on down, and so you can start us off. Say your name for the record, please, when you come to the microphone.
My name is Robert Sprinkle, and it's good to be here again. Used to be a employee of the county, so I know most everybody here, and I do appreciate what y'all do before I start anything, because y'all do work hard doing this. And I will tell you right now, it's not a job I would want to do. But I do have some questions, I do have some points I need to make. And before I get into that, there is one question I have for Ms. Samantha. Go back one slide from the end, one slide from the end on your screen. One slide from the end, because I got a question there. Slide from the end. I couldn't see it from back there, I couldn't see it from back there, so I'm not sure. And it dealt with, yes, it's this one here, and the question is, coming up with your increase per month on the housings here, were you using the fourteen point one five mils that the county, or were you using the twenty-one point one when you add in all the recreation?
Twenty-one point one.
I don't come up with the same numbers, not on the houses, because it's a lot more money than that when I come up with it. So just be advised of that. When I add in all of the, just, and I'm making statements more than anything, I got a, I do have a list of questions here that I will get to here in just a second. When I add up all the millage rates for Hinesville Liberty County, just for information, I come up with forty-nine point seven five three mils for the city of Hinesville. Is that about right? Total, is it? Forty-nine point, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
I'm just asking.
No, that would not be correct, anywhere near that.
When you add, when you add in the ten point five proposed for the city of Hinesville, the county unincorporated Hinesville fifteen point four zero.
You don't add all those together? Well, those are, yes, sir, no, sir, those are separate charts, so the only millage that would be, that may be levied for county residents by the commission?
No, I'm adding up all of what the county, with a resident in the city of Hinesville would end up paying.
Oh, I don't know, because I don't know what the Board of Education or others may do.
Fifteen point two five proposed, Housing Authority three point eight four three, and the Industrial Authority two mils. And it's just that what I'm saying is, it's getting hard, especially for someone on a fixed income. Senior citizens are probably some of the hardest hit by anything. It's getting very tough for senior citizens. I never thought that. When I worked here and I was working, didn't realize how hard a fixed income person was hit. But when you don't have another income coming in, and you get social security and you get your retirement, you don't get any raises on that, and when you do get a raise on social security, it gets taken away by Part B and Medicare, you don't get anything, and when you get hit with another tax bill, it gets kind of tough. And I've said it here before, I'm being taxed out of my home. I can either live in my home and stay there and never leave it and buy my drugs and my foods and don't go nowhere, or I'm gonna have to move in a couple of years. That's what it's coming down to. And I make a good retirement, because I did good. I set a good retirement for myself. And you talked about the digest, the digest did increase by almost a half a billion dollars. Digest increased almost a half a billion, which is really good. And yes, the exemptions increased by one point seven six, by a hundred and seventy-six million dollars, which is quite a bit, and I do understand that. But the taxes increase that you're collecting for the county is eleven point nine six four million dollars. So you're collecting a good bit of money extra, and that's pretty good. Last year, you only collected two point six six million dollars compared to eleven point nine six four million this year. So not too awful bad. And you increased the budget by eight point four million dollars from last year. And I understand, your insurance increased, you had no choice on that, none whatsoever. Your employees deserved the raises they got, and you were between a hard, a hard place or, between a hard place and a rock on a lot of this stuff. And I wouldn't want to be in your place anywhere. But here's some of my questions for you. You now have EMS under your county for at least a year, maybe two, I'm not sure. So I assume that you have at least some reasonable understanding of the cost to operate, what, at least one year of your reimbursables from insurance of operating that system, or that service is. Is the millage rate that you are setting for EMS the complete cost of operating EMS? Is that going to be the complete cost of running EMS? That millage rate that you're setting of EMS is one point eight three. Is that, are you going to have to take anything out of your general fund to back it up?
So the millage rate that you see there proposes, the net, the actual cost to run an EMS is about two and a half million dollars, it brings in probably seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so we subtract the seven fifty from a little over two million, and the one, whatever it was, a little over a mil or a mil point eight is what is left that's taxable solely for revenue not received.
So.
And that's applied, I'm sorry to interrupt, that is the same for all those you see on there.
So the revenue that you are receiving from insurance is going to cover the difference that what this one point eight three is going to receive? So nothing is going to come out of the general fund?
It all comes out of the general fund. What we've done, all these, all these services are in the general fund, but for taxpayer clarification, we wanted to show what those large dollar items were, which is what most counties in Georgia are tending to do now. And so since those are large subsidy items for us, we've taken them out of the general fund, net what their cost is for a millage allocation and showing that separate.
So in an audit next year, when the books get audited, we should be able to see a zero transfer to EMS other than what is reimbursed and what was collected in the, I'm just asking a question.
Be glad to get these answers back to Mr. Sprinkle if he wants to give us a list of those questions, it's just, we would be here a long time.
I'm just asking that because it is.
I'll be glad to get those back to him.
And again, goes to the same for fire, but when I get down to recreation, I know that we've always had to subsidize recreation, and that one point nine mils does seem a little And we do charge for services at the recreation. Are we, have we, are we raising any of the fees for recreation?
The first of the year.
You want me to answer that?
And when was the last time, and when was the last time it was raised?
Mr. Sprinkle, I can answer that, because I am the representative for, for the commission for Recreation Department. We have increased the fees, but again, and I know I've been up here for a while now, and you know how I feel about recreation. The issue is, recreation will, we will never be able to increase the fees for recreation to be able to offset the price. If we do that, we have less people.
Ever asked that question? I didn't ask that. Just ask if it was raised.
Okay.
And when was the last time it was raised?
It was raised, what, a couple of years ago? And then, I mean, that's, that's just with that. But, but again, Mr. Chair, Mr. Sprinkle, I know you probably have a long list.
No, I don't, no, not really.
If you give us that list, we.
No, I don't have a long list.
Okay, all right. Because I was trying to answer the question, but.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you wanted to answer or not, but.
No, I just, I just wanted to know the last time it was raised.
But the only thing I'm saying is, recreation is for, that deals with our children, and that deals with our citizens, with, who have multiple children.
Understand that.
Right, so.
But also deal with taxpayers also that is having to subsidize that through taxes.
Yes, sir. There we go.
And seniors that don't have the funds to help too much.
I get you. I get you. I get, get that.
You feel me?
Oh, I feel you.
Okay.
I feel you.
What is recreation doing for our seniors?
Well, actually, never mind. Mr. Chair, there you go.
Well, you're the guy, you're the representative.
Absolutely. And that's the thing. I think where we lose, where we lose is that recreation, and I think that's the falsity that we have here in Liberty County, that recreation is just for our youth. But we have parks and recreation for everyone. We have increased it, the pickleball courts.
Yes.
We have walking trails. And you know me, and you know I've been up here, and you know what I've been fighting for since I've been up here. For family entertainment. I've been fighting for recreation for everyone, from infant to the seniors. So whenever we talk about recreation, this is Sprinkle, come on, man.
Looking for seniors.
This is me you're talking to. You know, come on.
I don't doubt that.
Come on. We're not gonna get on recreation.
Need to get some other folks in town to get something else.
And that's the only thing I'm saying, Mr. Chair. I think we are on a time crunch.
When I left the county, and I think you got a copy of it, I'm not so sure. I gave a copy of what a senior park with senior exercise machines would look like.
And you know what that'll do? It'll be some costs.
Absolutely. Splotch costs all the way.
Hey, you know where I'm with that now, so, but...
Okay. And just to follow up with one question, because it came up during the meeting. And because your finance officer mentioned that last year you had to use fund balance to balance the budget. Is that possible, going to happen in the coming year?
All on the table, sir.
Yeah, I know.
I can't say we're gonna have to use some of it.
Because that's a hard thing.
Thank God we got it.
Exactly. And again, I think y'all do a great job. I really do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your vote of confidence with us.
But I will tell you that being retired is not a fun thing, especially when you start running out of money. And I talk to people that talk to me about this as well, because I fuss about it sometimes when money gets tight. And being in that retired community, it's not just all what it's cracked up to be. But be cautious that you got retirees out there that are living on fixed incomes. That is hurting. And you're not the only one I'm going to see. I'm going to the Board of Education. Now, I'm not getting any support from people. I wish I did. I've been talking it up and doing Facebook and stuff. I'm going to talk to them about age 65 and over being exempt from school board taxes. We've got a county right beside us that doesn't charge their citizens taxes, school board taxes. And I sure wish that I could get some support from you people too, because the school board doesn't need to tax people over age 65. But I need some support, because on the 14th of November, I plan to be down there and speak at their open hearing on that same thing. So I'm not going to be just talking to y'all about this.
All right. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you, Mr. Sprinkle.
Now, if anyone else has a larger list of questions, we're not going to answer those tonight. We will take those in, and we will promise to get back to you. But just come make a comment. You're welcome to do so, but if you have a larger list, we can't answer all those questions tonight. But we will promise to get back to you with your questions. They have to be written in and turned into our county staff. Yes, ma'am?
Howdy. Nancy Meyer, Colonel's Island, driving Highway 38 again after several months away from the country, being run over with all the dump trucks. Has nothing to do with taxes, that part. So my question is, explain to me, please, again, who is paying, where is the money coming from to four-lane Highway 38? Where is the tax money coming from to repair our road, Island's Highway? Who is paying for that? Is that in this tax?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
So who's paying for that?
So let me just give you the quick answer. No, ma'am, it's not in this taxes. So if you just let me handle this tax tonight, we didn't get through this hearing on this, and we'll get, but no, ma'am. Nothing in this proposal is, is for that. No, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Hold on, Mr. Chair.
Let me say this.
My answer.
You know me.
We have not paved a road.
I'm not, I'm talking about paving a road.
Paved, reconstructed, resurfaced? I thought that was your question. Where is the money coming from?
Not for paving. I'm talking about for making a four-lane highway.
Well, that's what I'm saying now. We have not done any roadwork of paving of any kind out of the general fund in over 28 years.
It's a new day.
Because if you had to do it, can I finish? Can I finish? If we had to do that now to pave one mile of road, you're looking at about 1.2 million to pave a mile of roads.
Who is looking at that, Mr. Stevens? Who is looking at that? Where is that money coming from? Is that coming from my pocket?
If you let me finish it, I'll let you know. That's why we have the splotch, and now we have the tea splotch to help us out with the roadworks. Okay?
Is that the answer?
With that question, yes, ma'am, it is.
Once again, I do not thank you.
Thank you, though. You're welcome. Next person, please. Please let it be related to what we're talking about today. Is it on topic for tonight, ma'am? Thank you.
Marcy Hamilton. First, I just want to second everything Mr. Sprinkle said. One of the things that I was going to talk about was also the retired folks and how that's going to affect them, displace them, all kinds of different things if their taxes keep getting raised. I believe from what I just saw that was posted, that this is the fifth year in a row that we've had the millage rate increased, is what I'm seeing on this handy dandy little chart here. Fifth year in a row. And you're talking about 35% increase for those of us on Colonel's Island. Whoops. So again, second everything Mr. Sprinkle said. My question was, just two, what are we getting in return for this tax increase? I'm not getting new roads down on my end of the county. I'm not getting sidewalks. I'm not getting street lamps. What else? What else? We don't have fire hydrants. We don't have water. I don't have sanitation. I don't have sewer, whatever. So that's one question. And two, wondering if you, Ms. Richardson, can just explain the difference between the Freeport exemptions and the tax abatements and incentives that we're giving to all the warehouses? Because isn't that two different things? Are we not giving them tax abatements as well as the Freeport? And also, can the Freeport be taken back? I know it was voted for. Is that something that can be put on a ballot again and rescinded?
It could be. So I'll catch a couple of those. The abatements are done solely through development authorities, so the county commission or us don't have any knowledge of exactly what abatements are being given.
But that still affects our taxes and the budget, does it not?
Not in this budget, no.
Not in this budget, okay.
Well, yes, if the Development Authority owns the property...
Which they own a lot of trade for, correct?
Then, then it would be non-taxable property, just like any tax, just like any property owned by any government entity. So what industrial authorities or what authorities do to attract industry around the state, called a tax abatement, they actually own the land, and they seed and actually own the building sometimes in order to offer that incentive to not be taxed, so that they enter a long-term rent with those. But I can't specific, I don't know what abatements or how much they are for these.
So at the end of the day, they're not paying any money to our county. They're not giving us anything. They're not providing anything to our schools, our roads, our citizens, anything?
They still may be providing some tax money, but it would depend on the abatement. We don't, it doesn't come through here, guys.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't answer a question. It doesn't come through here.
I was just curious, because I thought that they were two different things, the Freeport and actual taxes.
Two different things, you're right.
Two different things, that's correct.
So I saw that we had voted, or citizens, I'm not sure if I was here, when was the Freeport? Was that how, every many years?
Oh, gosh.
Twenty-five, 30 years ago.
Okay, so I didn't vote for that. I didn't vote for that. So can we take some of that back? Can we not take the money from the residents and get some money from the warehouses, from the developers, from the builders? Where are impact fees? What's going on? 35% is a lot. It's a lot for you guys to increase our taxes. I mean, my husband is hoping to retire in a couple of years too, and we're looking at this. I'm looking at almost $5,000 for an 1,100-square-foot house. It's insane. It's insane. I, you know, I'm gonna have to make him keep working, I guess, but, you know, come on, guys. It's a lot. Five years in a row.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Five years in a row.
I'll say this while the next person's coming. Having been on this board for more than five years, there's been reasons every year for our actions. And Mr. Sprinkle mentioned one, taking on the EMS, you know. And another one, taking on the comprehensive fire plan for the entire county. Those are the reasons that you saw some increases from year to year. It wasn't just a regular budgetary item. It's things that cropped up that this commission decided it would take responsibility for, so that everybody could call 911 and have fire service or have police service. Those are the reasons that, and this year, as we just very well said, it's the property insurance. I don't know. We weren't expecting that, but we gotta have it. Gotta have it. If you look back at all the previous years, you're gonna see something that caused us to do those increases. Only Jesus knows.
Quick question. Dennis K. For Marcy, we already pay the industrial authority two mill. So not only are they giving them abatements, we're also funding them. Why do we fund them? We're not, not all counties fund. Very few counties fund their industrial authority.
Yeah, so our industrial authority is a constitutionally created industrial authority by an act of the General Assembly. So you and I are mandated by law, unless that's repealed by the General Assembly, we're mandated to pay two mills, no more, no less. It has to be exactly two mills.
So we can actually go to the General Assembly and ask for repeal of that? As a citizens, we can start working on that?
Actually, not advocating that, but what, what...
Can keep Marcy busy.
Yeah, what you, what you would do is actually, yes, repeal the act that created an industrial authority for Liberty County. That's correct.
Because we don't, they're supposed to be transparent. I think we've done a few Goya's, et cetera. We've asked to be at meetings. We're not heard. So if we can get that two mill back, that might help us.
We asked to be at what meetings?
The industrial authority meetings that are on Mondays?
Meetings are public.
Oh, they told Marcy they were public, so.
The meetings are public. The meetings are public. Have been public.
Okay, they told Marcy they were, so.
That's misinformation. The meetings are public.
Okay, also, you had, I'm sorry, Samantha, you said our people went up. What is our current population, you said?
For our citizens?
Yeah, you said that part of this is because our population has increased exponentially over the last...
I didn't say that, actually.
Oh, I thought that's what you said.
No, I mean, not just, not population.
So our population actually, as of July 1st, 2022, was only 68,003. April 1st of 2020 was 65,274. That is per the United States Government Census. So unless you have other numbers, which I look...
Yeah, and actually, those are government estimates that are done. They don't, they do.
So what is our current?
They do intermediate census counts.
You know what our current?
It would be whatever's on the government census site for the official census count from 2020.
Okay, that is the 65,274. Okay. So really, but if we estimate it 68,000, we've only gone up 2,500 people. Okay, then we go in down further. Our poverty level between 2017 and 2021, median household income in Liberty County is only 50,617. The per capita for a 12-month capture between 17 and 21 was only 23,726. Persons in poverty are roughly 18%, and we're going up 35% on taxes. Then we have, we won't go into the schools. Housing, now we talk about housing, 27,262 homes roughly as between 17 and 21. We've added 532, 543 permits. 47.6% are owner occupied. Do we get higher taxes for any, like for, is there anything for, like renters? Like, you know what I'm saying, out-of-state taxes? How do we handle that, the out-of-state taxes? So renters?
We can't.
We don't collect.
Okay, so it's okay.
Yeah, nothing comes to the county commission or anything.
And so then the average house, actually, in the 17 to 21, in all of Liberty County, not just one section, even including Heinzville and Walterville, Riceboro, is $138,000. So when you take all this together, we don't have a very rich county. We're not a rich county. We're actually probably below average county for the actual entire state of Georgia. I think we're only in like the... To y'all, is why did we take over EMS? Why did we do it? Why didn't we keep it private until we were on a better foot? What was the rush?
It wasn't private.
It was not private.
Who are you?
Hospital had it.
Okay, but, okay, so why did we, was it a better option?
Hospital asked us to take it over for them.
Okay, they asked, but now we're, it's a burden. So I guess...
It's a service to the citizen. That's what it is.
I'll be honest with you, sir. Where I live, I'd be dead before they got there. So that's a whole nother, that's a whole...
That's your personal, but somebody is thanking God for EMS.
Yeah.
That did come.
Unfortunately, where we live, that would not happen. Okay, same thing with the fire station. We took over fire, correct? But we have no fire hydrants. We didn't take over fire. So when I moved to the county in 2019, on Colonel's Island and Sunbury, we had a volunteer fire department, did we not?
Yes, you did.
It is not volunteer anymore. We do not have fire hydrants. So we have a fire department with no water. Just asking. I'm just asking.
Ma'am, I was a part of that volunteer service, and I did it for a total of about 42 years. Volunteers now are going away because the demand, especially for the training for a volunteer and a full-time, is the same. So that makes a difference. Also, you do have water down there. We have to have a means of sheltering water. We have a water tanker. And there is such communication and collaboration now with all of the fire departments in the county. If something comes out major, it's automatically done by 911. That they said, okay, send this, send this, and we've got backup. But now, we do not have hydrants down there yet, because the county does not have a public water system. There's only one, county only has one county water system so far, and we are trying...
Where is that? Where is that?
That's at Miller Park.
Okay, behind the new fire station?
Right. So now, we are working, we have to start at zero and spread out. And that's what we're trying to do.
The industrial authority has a very big, 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 big water supply.
The industrial authority is hurting for water.
They're draining our wells, if you want to know the truth, our water source.
Let's stick with the millage rate here.
Going back to the millage rate, going back to that, I understand that. But again, I think we've put so much out there so quick. If you figure five years, 50% increase is what we're at roughly, I mean, if you average the five years. Maybe we went too quick, too fast, which is what we asked you guys all two years.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, the commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Stephanie Damon Morrell. I live on the east side of 95 Mr. Stevens. I believe I'm in your district. I just have two questions. We've lived in the county now for six years. I wanted to know, I was a little surprised, actually, this year when we got the initial just notice of what your taxes may increase to for your following bill. Actually, our home is apparently going to be $103,000 more, which was a little shocking, considering what the millage may go to. So any little bit will help, I think, anybody on the east side at this point. But I was curious, I was reading about the 2023 Governor Kemp's homestead, I think it's HTRG, his Homestead Tax Relief Grant. That was saying that property owners, it was a one-time grant that property owners would, that filed homestead would receive the tax relief grant in the form of the $18,000 reduction in their assessed value. So how will the county help us understand our tax bills and that that has been applied for those of us that have filed homestead? Sometimes I personally find our tax bill quite confusing in trying to figure out the algorithm or the formula that came up with the actual taxes. And I think just that transparency of knowing how the formula is calculated would ease a lot of the questions.
To go to the tax assessor office where they do that with you. They'll sit down with you and go through it.
I've actually tried to reach out to them via digital communications and email. I never get a response, to be honest. Okay, well, I would appreciate that. But that would help. But specific to the HTRG, the $18,000 reduction.
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, so it's a one-time grant that was approved by the state?
Right.
And what'll happen is, is that basically the tax commissioner will send the stateables. They need to pull up your piece of property, take it, look and make sure.
And they will do that. I've sent people to them before. They will do that with you.
And they can explain the whole formula about your individual-
That's what they do. We don't do that.
If we schedule it, they'll honor that appointment.
Pardon me?
If we schedule it, they'll honor that appointment. Okay, I got you, remember, Mr. Lovett, make sure, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moses is gonna make, get contact information, send down a statement.
The tax assessor's office, ladies and gentlemen, they have to work under government guidelines. They don't arbitrarily assess your property. The state tells them where they, at what level they have to assess your property. And if you don't abide by the state rules, you get fined. In fact, Glenn has told us, well, last year we were, we missed the-
The threshold.
The threshold.
Yeah, absolutely.
The state, it's not the county commission, the state of Georgia.
And I think we're right at that line this year.
Just kind of an information piece, too. That board of assessors is created by Georgia law to be separate from the board of commissioners. They're actually governed, the employees in that office, there's a separate, y'all know this, but a separate board of assessors that under law has to be appointed, so that county commissioners don't control the value of your homes. And the state, what they'll do is every year, they look at the county sales ratios, what the markets are doing, not just in this one, but in all other counties. And basically, you have to set your value rates within 32, 38% to 42% in that average market ratio that the state determines, or they penalize you. Because they get a share of the taxes, too, and so it's money lost for them. They penalize the county for not having the right ratios. So, yes, the values you see are mandated by the Department of Revenue as set by law.
Listen, I've been in government for a long time. I, I was on the school board for several years before this. I've never seen a government agency that wants to increase taxes. Never. It's not something that elected people want to do, who are taxing agencies. Never. But as Mr. Samantha explained, you know, certain things happen that we have to work until our county, but you have to run the county officially. And, and our county staff needs to be paid fairly, our EMS who are here need to be paid fairly, our fire, all those things. And provide, bringing in fire service wasn't an expense, but we need that for our county, because there are places in our county that did not have fire service. Those of us living in Hinesville, we live on Easy Street, cuz we could call 911. I know what, Waltherville has, I think, a paid-
Paid now.
Fire service. And others, let me go and get this out, the others are struggling, Midway and Riceboro are struggling now because they can't find volunteers. I see my Midway mayor pretending to be in here. So volunteer, you think volunteers are almost non-existent?
Not existing now.
So do you, do you want us to come and call 911? I hope that you would, and we want to come. Whether it be for fire or for, or sickness.
Mr. Chairman, just clarification to that Mr. Sprinkle's question, cuz we want to go double-check what those average increases, not that they will be the final ones, but would be to those homes, and they are correct as it relates to the millage you assess. Now, if, if we were looking at increases or costs for, as he mentioned, compounded with other agencies, again, we don't know what those are gonna be, but this is just the county cost for, for the budget you're looking at. It is, it is correct on those two home values.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, now this is the first, Sam, can you give us the, the schedule of hearings? This, this is the first, and I heard Mr. Sprinkle say he's gonna go by the school board office, so listen. The school board does school, the development authority does what they do. We don't, we don't cross into their land, they don't cross ours.
So the majority of our taxes that are paid is not from the county? It is school board?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Our second and third public hearings for the 2023 millage rate is scheduled for next Thursday, November 16th. The first one being at noon and the second one at 5:00 PM.
Yes.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I, I do wanna mention, we, we had added this in here, and I think everybody basically understands, but that one slide that says these numbers, any number that we're gonna calculate that this would cost based on a home value is before exemptions. So that's very important, cuz even if you have a homestead exemption, automatic, granted by the state of Georgia, that is not the amount it would increase. It would be less than that, or whatever they approve. There's no way with the variables we have and the exemptions that are given in the state that we could give examples of every type of exemption that might be out there and what it might cost you. So it's very important to remember, not indicating anything, but I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that is, that is before exemptions.
You'll be my last one.
I didn't mean to complicate it for you, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to give you information.
No, 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 my, my brain was rolling here, I apologize. Okay, let me ask you a question, though. Okay, so when we're talking about this, and we're talking about all, we're, we're trying to grow our county, we understand that. We want more families, we want more homes. You obviously heard us, we don't want warehouses. I understand regarding the parks and all of that, of course, I hate to say it again, on the east side, we don't have any parks, so.
Can I stop it right there?
Yeah. We have one.
In the district you live in, how many parks do you have?
We have one park.
How many parks do you have in your district?
Six.
Not, not down Colonel's Island, we have one.
In his district, which is, which is that end of the county.
Okay, I don't live in the district.
So that end of the county versus the end of the county, how many you have? Six.
Still be in Hinesville by the time I get to the end of this county.
No, 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 he doesn't do Hinesville.
Okay, hold on one second.
He doesn't do Hinesville.
Real quick.
No, you, you brought it up now, he doesn't cover Hinesville. It's on the east end of the county, so you can't have more in your backyard.
So, Mr. Stevens, Commissioner Stevens, where is the six that I can go to with not having to cross 17? Is Kay Creek one of our parks, or is that, no? Okay. Okay, so would I have to go to Riceboro to reach another one? Okay, so I'd have to drive almost 30 minutes to get to another park, okay.
A county park or a park area?
You got the small park at Eve Park.
Uh, that is a beauty. Okay, I know, we've used it, and I, I thank you, I thank you. Still have the metal slides that aren't allowed. Okay, real quick, my question-
But you, you're missing the point.
No, my question was really for him. Okay, so going back to what you're talking about, okay, only adding X amount, only adding it after your, your deductions or whatever, homestead, whatever we can take. But you, we've gotta understand, there's a bigger picture to this. As we tax ourselves up, 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 you've got 10, 8% interest rates now. You've gotta have people, you're talking about the insurance. That insurance increase was not just the county, that was a statewide. We all bared that. We bared that on our cars, boats, houses. Average person, it, it killed us, let's be real. But then on top of it, you want people to move into the county, but we're taxing them to death, and that goes on their mortgage, and they may not qualify for our houses. And that's gonna push them to Darien, which is actually exploding, we're pushing them to Pembroke, which is exploding. So we're taxing ourselves out of even bringing families here. Think, I mean, we only have two high schools. So it's a bigger picture than what you guys are, I understand, it's great, I understand. Okay, now, hold on, Ms. Marcy asked me to ask one more question, since I got a minute.
You got a point.
Okay, hold on one more minute. What are we doing regarding the, the, the Freeport exemptions? How are the new 13 roughly warehouses coming into Trade Port East and the new Dorchester complex gonna impact our budget next year? You saw almost a hu, well, 100, whatever, astronomical 35% increase in Freeport. We're adding these, so how, how's this gonna affect us in '24, '25, '26, as we keep bringing up these exemptions, but not really adding a lot of jobs? And we've all been there. And then might be pricing ourselves out of actually bringing tax base into our county via homes? Just asking, listen, I'm leaving.
Liberty County Development Authority, not the Liberty County Board of Commissioners.
But you just said we can't go there, so that's our next.
I didn't say you can't, I said you could go, you said you couldn't go.
No, you said we can't go to the meetings.
No, I did.
It's, it's, it's public.
Okay, we'll go there next.
You're confusing yourself.
No, okay. I'll see you next week.
Thank you. All right, we will end this public hearing, I'm sorry.
I, I, I just, I just wanna say something before we close this public hearing, Ms. Chair. First of all, to, to all the citizens that had something to say, we, we do truly appreciate you all taking the time. There we go, thank you, thank you. But, but, but more importantly, just, just listen to the conversation from, from you all and also from us. Again, I just wanna say a few things. First and foremost, it's difficult for us to sit, sit up here and raise taxes. Cuz first of all, contrary to a lot of beliefs, we have to pay the same exact taxes. That's first and foremost. Secondly, by just listening to all the conversations that, that are being had from you all and, and also from us, it's one thing that we all have in common, and everyone is saying the same thing, and we're all discussing the same thing. You know what that is? The quality of life. You all, and we are talking about from fire to EMS to recreation and everything else. And at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do. We're, we're trying to make Liberty County a, a great community. And the greater the community that it is, is, we're gonna have to pay a little bit more. Especially when, when we're talking about from the tax exemptions, which majority of them are coming from the state. That's not coming from us. And, and as, as, I guess we could go back to, to that slide where, where we're showing that, that, the increase in, in exemptions from, since I've been up here, since 2011 to, to this day. And first of all, I apologize, I have on glasses, I'm, I don't wanna scare y'all, that's the reason why I have them on. But more importantly, if, thank you, back, 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 I, I just wanna show the simple numbers with the scale, what we were talking about. Right, with the graph. We went from, what, what is that, from 192 all the way to 558? I mean, regardless of how you look at it, the math, they're not mathing. You know, the, the more exemptions that we have, the less money that we have to provide services. And we all want services. First of all, the, the fire department. I represent District 2, which entirety is inside the city limits of Hinesville. And since the day I sat in this seat, I've always said that I get elected from District 2, which is inside the city limits of Hinesville, but I represent all Liberty County. And one of the, the most difficult situations that I've had since I've been up here is when, when we got those numbers from 911, when people are calling 911 from the east end to the west, to everywhere else outside of City Hinesville, and no one was coming. You call 911 and no one is coming to you for your rescue. And majority of fire calls, and Mr. Stevens could attest to this, is not because your, your house is on fire or dwelling is on fire. It's our citizens, our senior citizens that we keep talking about, where they're having cardiac arrest or something like that, and no one is coming. And with me, that's a scary thing. So we sit down, let's, let's, let's call a spade a spade, we sit down with all the municipalities before and said, listen, we have to do something. And a lot of those municipalities, I'll say it if no one else wanna say it, a lot of those other municipalities decided not to go for it. So us as a commission, we had to make that difficult stance to say, before we sit back and wait on these other municipalities to do something, we're gonna do something for our citizens. And did it cost us? It cost every last one of us something. But what we have done is provide a service for your citizens in the east of the county, citizens to the west. And to this day, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we did something. Because like I said, in Hinesville, at my house, if I call 911, someone's coming, very quickly. And me sitting up here on the county commission, I couldn't sleep well at night knowing that 911 calls on outside of the city limits of Hinesville is not being answered. So that's one thing. Another thing that, that we talked about is about Freeport. Freeport, and I get what we're saying. But more importantly, we're looking at the money that we're losing. But let me tell you, and I have the graph right here, if any of the citizens wanna see it, I guess what, Ms. Round, they could come and get, get a copy of it.
Yes, sir, and it's online.
Absolutely, you could look online. This, this is the graph. Everything in red is 100%. Everything in green is 100% Freeport. You, you see these small little gray areas? There is 0%. They have zero industry. So I understand what we're saying, we're counting the money that we, that we're losing, but let me tell you. Especially now, if you all see where this region is going, with the Hyundai plants, everything else, is very, 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 very competitive right now in Georgia. So I, I, I understand that people are frustrated, and I'm, I'm gonna get to a point. But I, I just want you all to understand, if we change anything in this region, where Scriven County, F. Hamm County, Chatham County, Bryan County, and also us are the same, and that's where all the industry is coming in the next 15 to 20 years, if we make a change, which, I, I don't even mind us looking at the option. I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm fine with democracy. But I want everyone to be educated on, be careful what you ask for. Because we'll mess around and lose industry, or these major companies, and I know some people say they'll never leave. Let me tell you one thing about business that I know, especially big business. That's a tax write-off for them to shut these doors. And they gone, and guess what they gonna do? They're gonna go for another one of these locations, it don't even have to be Georgia, but someone else that's gonna incentivize them to move there. And if you don't believe me, just Google. That's one thing. But to the citizens, trust me, I get it. And Mr. Sprinkle, you know what, how I feel about recreation and everything else. And since I've been up here, I've asked for a few things on the splot. I've asked for revenue generating projects to offset this. And I've said this up here for the last 10 years and with no support. So again, to my fellow commissioners, I ask again, let's look at finding a way to make some money off a revenue generating project, which we can't say that it doesn't happen because it's happening all around the state, i.e. Splashing the Borough, the water park over in, in Statesboro. You know how, how they built that? Off a splot. And it's bringing in revenue. So the money that we're talking about, we, we don't have, there's ways that we can make it. So I want us as a commission, I challenge us to look outside of the box and figure out a way to create more revenue. I don't, from economic development standpoint, to a family entertainment center or whatever, I just challenge us. We've, we've sit here, we've been sitting here for years, I've been preaching the same thing, and we're hearing our citizens, and we're looking at every year the increase. And I, every year I preach the same thing, can we look at a revenue generating project? Something. And what I'm saying is, we can't say that it can't happen because it's happening all around the state. So I just challenge my commissioners and our citizens, let's just come together and figure out a way how to continue to make this community better. Mr. Chairman, and I'm done for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Chair, take the motion to close our public hearing, go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, show your hands, please. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, you're welcome to stay, or you can be excused. We have to finish our agenda. If you don't agenda, don't leave. At this time, I saw Mayor Pro Tim Washington, she's made the meeting. Let's present this to the Dorchester Improvement Association for $106,000 for their historic cultural grant. If you will come, your committee's gonna come with you.
You wanna come down or go up?
I remember it was 21.
Y'all come up. Can you count?
Dorchester.
Thank you. And expect good things from us, too.
Yeah, I announced it. Alrighty. Hey, listen. Speaking of what people get, speaking of what people get for their money, let's talk about a new health department that's coming our way. That serves everybody. Those are some of the things you get for your money. It doesn't matter, it serves the county. It serves the county. It serves the county. Come on, Mr. Holton. You can put everything in your back door, ladies, y'all know that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Board of Commissioners, appreciate you letting me come up here, and thank you for whoever put together the, you know, the order of things, making me feel like I'm part of the community, so.
Been around us long enough.
I feel like I need to be a part, one of the part of a three-part, I need to come to the other ones, too, so.
Let me, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm being, I'm gonna do this myself, Lee. He's also, he's responsible for the work you've been doing on the gym in Midway, that serves your area. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, and, yeah, we need to, that ballgame used to be planned, too, I think. But I just want to give you an update on where we are with the health department and kind of show you some images of where we're heading with the design. This, you see this first image here, what we're trying to do, and then try not to pay attention to the brick color as much as, you know, this is really showing the shape of a building, this is showing something that fits into the other buildings that we've designed in town, trying to create or help maintain like this low country, at-home feeling, kind of a little bit more of a timeless feeling, a place where people will feel comfortable. This facility, let's see here, I can probably just get you a little bit closer. This is the front entrance, and in a minute, I'll show you kind of, kind of go back to the whole overall site. I'll show you the circulation and everything, but just want to give you a little bit of flavor. This is not, this is not what we're considering the final, but this is a, this is kind of like a close to the flavor that we're presenting for the building. And I can also show you a little bit interior, but this is the exterior. Of course, this is still, this is built, this will be built similar to what we did at Live Book Library. You know, this is, we looked at two-story facilities for this, but at the end of the day, the one-story facility was gonna be more cost-effective. And really, for the function of the building makes a lot more sense. So this is all one-story facility. Just looking at the exterior, another different shot from a different angle, but the interior, and I'm gonna show you a plan that'll show this lobby area. In your facility right now, you have a small lobby in there, but one of the things, when we met with the staff, there's a lot of tight spaces in that building. I mean, you outgrew that building some time ago, and I think when COVID hit, it just exacerbated it. And you really found out that you try to fit a bunch of sick people in there, you're not, you know, there's no, there's no room to move. So I'll show this on the plan in a minute, but this is just a shot of when you walk in the front entrance, looking at the the stations right there at the front. This is standing, looking back out towards the front of the building. This is a pretty, this area is kind of very internal to the building, but those of you familiar with the buildings that we do, we really try to draw as much natural light into the buildings as possible. So we are recommending that we do bring some light into the center of this building, but also all along these entrances. And I'll show you in a minute, there's a, when we look at the plan, there is a central area where you can enter from three different locations. And each one of these locations have large glass windows, so we're bringing natural light into this center space. And these are just a few images showing you kind of where we are. Just a different shot for the interior. And then I wanted to get to this. This is a overall site plan. And, I don't know if this thing, does that ever laser on it? I think it does. Yeah, it does. So obviously, you probably are orienting yourself to this, but 84 here. So what we're looking at is, we're trying to create a building where you have more building on the front, and parking is more along the sides to the rear. We do have some parking up front, but we wanted to push that building up towards the street as much as we could. But this building, since it's broken up into different departments that we'll get to in a minute, what we're creating is basically almost like different parking areas for different areas of the building. That central area that I was talking about here, this is the one where we looked at walking in the front. And you'll see this on a bigger plan, but there's an entrance here, here, and in the front. So we're creating areas where not all your parking's gonna be up here, because a lot of your services are gonna be back to the side. And I'm just gonna flip, maybe flip back and forth a little bit to show you this, but just to continue on the site circulation. We're creating basically a roadway all the way around this building. One of the things that we discussed before is during a mass immunization event, if, God forbid, we have another one of those, but if we do, we are trying to prepare this building for that, so that you have a way to go, you know, in basically a circular motion around the building, or around the building and out a different direction. Understanding there's gonna be some DOT work for a divided highway in the future. We did create a way to get out, so you can make that left turn, so you don't have to go, you know, right only. Right now, before that project, you know, this is gonna be basically a right-in, right-out situation here. We did create additional parking light in the back, and we also connected, we're looking at connecting that road back here to your other property, so that you have connection to the recycling facility. And this is just a blow-up of the plan, just so we can just talk a little bit, I probably should have put this earlier. And this is a departmental plan, you can't really see this, but I can kind of run you through the building. So this is a family planning wing, this is a WIC wing, this is environmental health back here, and this is the care center here. And then this is all your, your public lobby area. Now you can start to see the amount of space that we're recommending in this lobby. There's actually two separate waiting areas here that would have seating on either side of this entrance airlock. And then the rest of this is circulation, because like I said, this is an entrance from this side and from this side. And every entrance has direct supervision from staff. And then this is more or less, this is your records keeping here. Really, this core area of the building here is all back-of-house. This is your staff toilets, your break area, kitchen, your training room, your large conference room, wellness center, that's all kind of in this core area of the building. And then all of the public areas are to the outside, to where we try to give natural light to each one of those spaces. So that's, that's why the building is kind of shaped the way it is. I think, are there any questions about the plan itself, about, I know I kind of went through that fast, but I know we've had, it's been a long night already. So I can go back to either one of these slides.
Don't cut a short on this part, though.
This election night, too. David, I'm over here.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. Go back to the other slide where you said, oh, right there, now this, to the east side, that exit. The other east.
Oh, that's the, that's the east.
Yeah, what, what street does that come out to, Joey?
That's Leyton. That's the piece of property we had to buy.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, is the traffic gonna come out to Leyton, and when you come out to Leyton, you could go left or right and come back to 84?
The main thing, yes, towards Zaxby's, the main thing was to try to get something back to that light, so that you'd have a control.
To the light that faces Memorial.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, 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 thank you.
That, one note there, too, and sort of interject, is it, is it probably what we thought about there is that would be an exit only to get back out, so that you wouldn't have a lot of traffic in that residential area, trying to go in and out? Because we are kind of restricted on space through there. So again, privacy for the residential area, but to limit, again, those people really wanting to come back out and make a left-hand turn, so they don't try to come out before the medium breaks are done and turn a left into that traffic by VA Center, we, that, so it would offer them the ability to do this.
And while we're here, I think there are, I mean, before anybody asks about it, somebody always asks about parking, but we do have a, we're showing about, I think, 120 parking spaces here, with, I believe, 1188 spaces.
And I like the fact, you know, that, like you said, now, folks are getting with parking on the side or either in the back, pushing the building out front, so, you know, it's visible.
Yes, it's very, it's such a, it's such a high-profile site. You know, you don't want to go and see the Walmart effect, you know, where you just have, let's see your parking, and it's, I mean, it's, I mean.
It's gonna be nice.
In a lot of cases, we do try to pull the building all the way up, but then sometimes it's not practical, because then you're, you really are having to enter from the rear of the building and the front of the building, so. But, you know, like in the case of your Justice Center, it's, it actually is practical to pull that building all the way up. Just, you have to deal with those two entrances, though, still.
But you know, before we're taken by something, Commissioners, and y'all have noticed like I have, a lot of folk don't realize there's parking on the real side of the Justice Center. So they're parking, the banks are parking out across the street.
Oh, no.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes, they do. So we're gonna have to educate folk. I see the same thing coming out of Old Time Restaurant, rather than go to the light, they try to come out right there and wait and wait. I said, guys, just go down a little bit. So we're gonna have to be able to kind of direct them to use that Leyton Street as an exit. Otherwise, you're gonna have a problem on 84.
But that has been, you know, trend downtown with City Hall, right up on the zero lot line also.
We like it. Just the folk don't realize it's parking behind the Justice. Joey, if we ever had to expand, how would, how would we accommodate?
Well, you actually do have.
Building, I thought that David answered that.
Yeah, what you'll end up having to do is lose parking, or park, you know, or park, you know, park elsewhere, because it's, there's really, we're filling up. We're trying to, we're trying to give you as much parking space as you can, and now the building, when we originally sat down and programmed this building, I think the first meeting that we had, we were at probably, I think, around 32,000 feet. We met with the user group, and, you know, as normal, that, it started growing. I think, and then it went up to like 36, and now we're sitting at 44. With the size of the building. And what we're trying to do, and what they're trying to do, it's hard to get someone to think about, not what you have, but what you will need five, 10 years from now. But we're trying to get, they're trying to think about what they need without being two additional exam rooms, you know, not six additional exam rooms, but there's, we're trying to build some future into this. I mean, as we do in any building that we do, we try to make sure we do have some accommodation for future growth.
But, yeah, and I guess that was my question. I mean, you know, you build this at X amount of square feet, and, you know, we've been talking about growth in Liberty County, this whole area. And so if you had to put a number of years there for this size, what are we talking about? 10 years? Five?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, that would depend on how you're growing, really. You know, there's certain things that affected that. You know, like, like one of the things is bringing the WIC program over from Fort Stewart. You know, that was one of the things we talked about on this project pretty extensively, in terms of, you know, what are we doing in this area to accommodate that, you know, that future? This is a lot larger than what they have, a lot larger than what they have currently, in their, in their program at the current facility. But we're trying to make sure that there is enough in there. I could, you know, we try to build our buildings to be 50-year buildings, at least, 50-year buildings. In terms of growth, I mean, that's really, I'd say there's enough in here, there's gonna be enough empty offices in here when you, you probably won't feel uncomfortable. But it's, but there are some, some spaces that are gonna be, I mean, they're gonna use them for something, but they're there for growth. I know I didn't answer you with a 20-year mark or.
I guess you won't know till you know, but I was just wondering, when you built it, when you build it, you know, what, what were you thinking that, because all we hear about is growth, the Hyundai plant, the, in Bryan County, and you know, this whole coastal empire is gonna change. I mean, you watch the news and see like every two years, they dig in the port deeper and raising the bridge in Savannah, every, every time you turn around, there's, because of everything that's coming. And, you know, we're gonna be faced with that as well. So I was just wondering, was all that considered? And again, you won't know, but I was just wondering, was that considered when we decided to go this? Because if it happens the way people say it's gonna happen, then, you know, this would be too small, maybe, pretty soon, but I'm not sure.
I would be hard, and the reason I say this is, when you go, when you go into your Department of Environmental Health, for example, and you know, there's, I mean, probably a handful of people in there right now, there's your Department of Environmental Health, right there.
Right now, they're sharing offices to a three-in-a-s cubicle.
But they're, you know, these are all, this is all part of their suite, so it's, you know, that's a, it's a substantial difference. And that's one of the things that, you know, it is hard to get some people, and they've been, they were very good about, you know, coming to us and saying, you know, we need to think about, you know, this bit of growth, and we're like, well, if you're gonna add two, we're gonna add three, because that's, we were used to master planning buildings that are longer-term governmental buildings, so, you know, we always try to push it just a little bit further, and then you guys are gonna have to tell us to pull it back. So, but that's, that's kind of the way we operate, just to make sure that, you know, I don't want to come back, and I have had to do it on a, on a school, you know, and come back and do an addition, you know, only five years later. And it was just for no other reason than an industry came into town and boom, you know, 700 new kids. But it's, it does happen. And what, you know, you mentioned Hyundai, what we're doing right now with Hyundai is outrageous. You know, we're trying to accommodate growth over the regions, so. But not a bad problem.
They're coming.
Any, any comments on kind of the direction of the looks of the building?
I guess, and I'm sure they do, too.
I mean, it's not, um, I don't think it's anything over the top, it's something that we're trying to do to fit into the, you know, using durable materials. Uh, we've already kind of had some, um, early discussions about HVAC systems and how important that is, and how that really cuts your, um, you know, using a, a little bit upgraded system can cut your, um, you know, your costs. Um, it was interesting, I was just thinking about this the other day, when we did the, the old courthouse, and just replacing the HVAC in there, that made a massive difference on the, your power bill, (laugh) there.
When do we, uh, excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Gonna break ground?
When are we gonna break ground?
Yes, sir.
You...
Any ideas?
Oh, I'm, I'll give you kind of an update on where we are, because, um, we're actually in the next, um, this kind of the next few weeks, because we're, what we need to do now is have, we have a good, clear direction, we have directional site, we have direction on like kind of the look of the building. And what we do now is we meet with our, we get all of our engineers, we come over to the jo- to the, to the site, we're actually gonna meet with, um, you know, some, some of the county folks, some of the people from, you know, we're gonna get more into the details of, um, you know, exactly where all the power outlets go, and, you know, generator systems and things like that, so. Um, and then, in the next eight weeks, all that'll be put together into a set of documents. So, um, we're hoping to get this thing, um, ready to hit the street, and it'll probably be around February, first of February.
Just, w- one more question, David. Now, you, you did say that, you know, the, the, a decision was made to have one story as opposed to, to two stories. What, what, wh- why, why was that?
So, um, the only thing that really makes two-story buildings, well, one of the major things that makes a two-story building really, um, effective is to be able to stack enough on that second story. Um, in this case, your services here that you're providing, you don't want to send a lot of these people up elevators or upstairs to get to services on the second floor, so really, you need to keep your care center downstairs, your, um, your actual, uh, family planning center needs to be downstairs, um, you know, all of your public services besides just regular office space really needs to be on that first floor. Um, it doesn't have to be, but if you can do it, it's gonna make your building a lot more efficient. And what you don't want to do is just stack like a two-story section, small section of the building, it's just not gonna be cost-effective. Um, and I think your function's gonna be greatly improved with these services being on one story.
How do, how do you, um, what's the word, compare that with, um... You mentioned future growth and having available land space. I know you said the parking, parking areas could be, could be used. Would that still allow us to meet the requirements for parking if we had to use some of the parking lot to, to extend, to expand?
Uh, that wouldn't, I wouldn't know that.
But there's certain rules, was there?
We're...
I know there's certain rules to that, that you have to have so many parking spaces.
Right, so right now, I think we're required by the city to have like eighty spaces, and we have a hundred and twenty plus eleven.
Or we could ask for a variance.
The other thing, I think, without getting too much into it, is, is you look at the neighborhood around it, I'd classify that as, as a transitional neighborhood. So, uh, Zaxby's there, you've got another office on the corner, most, not all, but most of the homes there on Layton are rental, just got rental units in there. So, it's somewhat of a neighborhood in transition with traffic, and, um, that's probably that or state property next door could be an option for me.
All right. So, I guess we, like it says, we bless your start.
Yes.
Okay, well, we're gonna run with it.
All right.
(laughing) Um, all right. Well, if there's no other questions, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Might I add, we're using SPOLOs for this, uh, project, as well as some funds that the Coastal Health District has been...
The Health District has, um, set, set aside, yes, sir.
Other evidence of the commissioners being good stewards of taxpayers, right?
That's right.
G dot speed ordinance, Trent Long?
Yes, sir, you guys got a copy of this, uh, when I sent out my mid-month report last week, last month? Um, so, the state puts out every year or so a list of roadways that they've looked at the speeds on, um, and this kind of ratifies our speed ordinance, and it helps our, uh, Sheriff's Department and police departments around to, uh, be able to enforce speed limits and issue. Um, we've gone through and, and looked at their list, um, and we agree with everything that's on here, and we're recommending that you guys adopt the speed ordinance, something we do fairly regularly. Um, but, you know, we, we can, if you want to challenge something, then basically what we have to do is go through and do a speed study and challenge whatever speed it is. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Trent, um, I hadn't pulled it up yet, on Allen's Highway, the speed limit is fifty-five.
Yes, sir.
Okay, fifty-five means sixty-five. Okay?
So, yes, sir, so, wh- when you do the speed studies and you look at how you rate speeds, um, there are several factors that you look at. Um, one of them is eighty-five percentile speed, you know, what is everybody driving at? Um, that is a large factor. Um, you also look at the condition of the road, the sharpness of your curves, you look at roadside hazards such as driveways and, you know, the number of driveways you have and what kind of instructions that you do. So, um, this, it's kind of a little bit of a process that you go through. Now, the reason that you look at the eighty-five percentile speed is, you know, if you set it lower, you know, already, people are going eighty-five percent, you know, eighty-five percent of people are going a certain speed. Now, you're gonna find on Allen's Highway that eighty-five percentile speed is probably greater than fifty-five. In that case, the speed is set at the regulatory limit, in this case, which is fifty-five miles an hour.
I've had some concerns, you know?
Yes, sir, no, I, I, I understand. And, and you know, it's, it's, this is all too common question to try to lower a speed limit where we have bad behaviors or high speeds, and, you know, um, the laws are, are set up to set at a, a certain rate or regulatory speeds for different types of, uh, roadways. So, now, we can go through and, you know, do a traffic study on different segments of Allen's Highway and see what the eighty-five percentile speeds are, calculate the curves and the number of obstructions, and, and go through that whole process. Uh, and once you go through that whole process and you send it to DOT, and DOT goes through a review process to see if they concur with, uh, what your recommendations are, and then they are the ones that actually say yes or no to the speed.
What would it cost the county to do this study?
It depends on the length of the road and which areas you're doing. Um, you know, as little as twelve hundred dollars to as much as thirty-six hundred dollars, somewhere, they're, they're not that terribly expensive. And we do them, we've done them fairly regularly for different areas, so, we have the equipment, we set the counters out, go through the process, and send it on to DOT. That's why I know.
Yeah? So, what do you need to hear, do it or don't do it?
I mean, I can do it, but just my knowledge, I, I know based on eighty-five percentile speed and knowing the radiuses in those curves, the recommendation's gonna be the setting at the regulatory speed at fifty-five miles an hour.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I'll be glad to do it, but I just, I, I don't, I don't think that we're gonna gain anything.
Achieve anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Holding item, Trent?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, Chair, entertain the motion to, um, approve the G dot speed ordinance as presented by Mr. Long. Of course, we do know that if we should decide in the future to challenge it, we can go through that process.
Can go through the process. Best thing is go ahead and adopt it and send it on, that way, you're good for the year, and then, if we want to challenge something, we can challenge it. Need a motion?
Motion, yes, sir.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Hey, show your hands, please. Can I lose, Commissioner Spazier?
Second item I have tonight is the LMEC funds. Um, we've talked about this a little bit, uh, over the past couple of months, and I'm sorry I wasn't here last month to kind of wrap this up. We have, uh, basically four hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and ninety cents of funds that will come from Department of Transportation for, uh, local maintenance incentive grant. Uh, we have to match it with thirty percent, uh, which is a hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents, uh, which, uh, the way we have it set up now would come out of T-SPOLOs funds, uh, from different commissioners in the districts. So, what we've done is we've listed, uh, different projects for different commissioners, um, and these are possible projects. We can put them on the list, uh, go ahead and submit it to the Department of Transportation, and, um, if we, if you decide to change sometime during, during next year, we can change. All I have to do is go through a process with the, uh, local office of changing it on our, uh, project report, which is a easy, uh, project, as long as it meets the requirements, we can change it. Um, but what we'd like to do is go ahead and get at least some of these roads, uh, go ahead and fill out our project report, send it off, get the money down here, so we can be moving forward.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
I'm satisfied, satisfied, Mr. Chairman, with mine, too. I had talked to Mr. Long previously about them. I'm not sure about the rest of the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Trent, um, let's see, the fourth district, we got the villages at Limerick.
Yes, sir.
Um, how did we come up with that in particular for this project?
Well, we're getting ready to put together a, a little package to try to do some repair out there, and, um, I went and just went a little bit further, and I estimated on the high side to try to make sure that I had enough covered. Um, I certainly don't think I'm gonna spend all of two hundred fifteen thousand dollars out there, um, but we're in the process of... Yeah?
So, this is not the only...
Yeah, we, we, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll scale it back to the monies that we have and fix the, the bigger parts, or the, the worst parts out there.
All right, so this is not the only, I guess, road project that qualifies for the LMEC in the fourth district, or this one?
Oh, no, sir, it's just one I suggested.
Okay, and you said that...
But if you have another one, I can certainly switch it out very easily.
We don't have to do that now.
Um, well, you don't have to do it now, I can put the village at Limerick on the, uh, the project report center off DOT, and if you want me to change it, I'll be glad to change it. So.
Wait, I've lost, did I get, how far did I get now?
Haven't gotten a motion yet. Are we ready for a motion? Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the presentation by Mr. Long on the LMEC funds.
Second.
Second.
What's your second? With the knowledge that Commissioner Jones can...
Yes, sir. If you want to talk to me, I'm, it'll be late this week when I submit this to DOT, just let me know what you think, and then I'll swap things out, so, we still got a little bit of time.
Okay, all right, good, all right. All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you, motion passed.
You don't want me to do the bridge, do you? You got the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay. Creek Bridge replacement?
Yes, sir, thank you, Ms. Chairman. As you remember, uh, sometime back, you, you signed an agreement with G dot, MOA with G dot, that specified we'd be responsible for the right-of-way, uh, on the bridge, that was actually a G dot requirement, we'd be responsible for right-of-way. You signed in that MOA, uh, which basically we agreed to do what G dot suggested, they're doing the full bridge replacement, so, uh, it's a very small amount. They've determined that that right-of-way amount, uh, that will need to be spent will be seventy-five thousand dollars, so what you got in front of you is an amended MOA that basically says you agree, again, to do it, and agree to spend the seventy-five thousand dollars to do that. And, and I would tell you without, you know, uh, directly saying it comes out of any one district or another, I think we probably find that as a countywide bridge replacement project in some of our existing SPOLOs funds, so it wouldn't hurt your districts. And so, the action we need tonight is to go ahead and approve this, we can send it back to G dot.
Contain the motion?
So move?
Second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Creek Bridge, Little Spazier Road. All right, appointment, RC and D Council.
Yes, sir, we received...
One, one we have.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Brown will take care of that.
I'm sorry. But I was gonna say, you, we received a letter, uh, that you have a copy of, from Coastal Georgia, RC and D Council, asking you to name an appointment, uh, appointee to replace Mr. Amel Cofer. Haven't had anybody on there, so, uh, this was not something that we actually ran in the paper, because we had a direct request to appoint someone here, but it's whatever the commission's wishes are, whether to consider...
Mr. Standard accepted?
I, I, my indication... My indication is he would be willing to accept, yes, ma'am, at the commission.
I thought we, we decided on that already, didn't we?
Didn't we? It hadn't been up here for official action, no, sir.
Well, I make a motion, we appoint Mr. Standard to Coastal Georgia Regional Coast Council.
Second?
Second.
Second, we accept. If it's Andrew Standard?
Yeah, it is.
Isn't that him come up for something?
Well, I thought we talked about, we talked about it the last time, and, um, and we said just go ahead, because everyone knew him, and, and it was a...
It wasn't this one? We appointed him to something?
I can go back and check.
Okay.
But it, yeah, let, let's go ahead and be sure, because I'm...
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you, I know, I discussed it.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, we, we might not have voted on it last time, I think.
We're gonna vote tonight.
We just discussed it.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
We did, we did, yeah, okay.
Cause I, cause, you know, cause the, the, the committee that does the point, I was trying to help him, I was trying to help.
No, no, we, we, I need to go ahead.
I, I, I remember, I remember trying to push y'all across the finish line.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
You lifted my jacket, he got in.
Let me say something about these board appointments. I noticed that Ms. Maria has been, I have a new board listing, and we need to also check to make sure if it says must be a resident of Liberty County, we need to start checking that. Make sure that someone who we appoint to certain boards, if it says must be, then it should be or not be appointed, point blank.
That's true, I agree.
And, and, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to piggyback on that somewhat. Uh, some, some of these, um, our district lines, Joey, our, our, our district lines did move, and I, I think there are some boards that's, well, at least, I don't know if they have to be in your district, but they, um, each commissioner has a representative, and I don't know if, if, uh, if the bylaws calls for that person to actually be in your district. You know, my district moved somewhat, so, let's say if, if I had a, a recreation board appointment, and when my line moved, he's in Eddie's now, and Eddie could end up with two people in his district, and I end up with none. So, and, and Joey, if you could just let us know the, the board appointments that requires, um, that, that's district appointments? And, and, and then, and, and because we have a hard time, in some cases, filling these board appointments, do we really want to hold it to that, or do you just get a volunteer who's willing to serve?
And, and before to answer your question, we'll go back and check them all, there's very few that are per, that are by district, excuse me, that says they have to reside in the district, I don't know of any. But it basically gives the commissioner of each district one appointment, what the policy of the board has been in the past, exactly what you said. Is that you have appointed folks that are not in that district as your appointee, because they had been on the board, lines changed, whatever it was, so, I will double-check on those district appointments, but I'm sure that none of them are specific to them having to live in the district.
Yeah, but, and if they don't, um, I was gonna appoint, um, Mayor Prov, Tim Washington. Yeah, but, and if they don't, um, I was gonna appoint, um, Mayor Pro, Tim Washington.
Your girlfriend?
My girlfriend from the old days.
Mr. Chair.
My girlfriend from the old days.
Uh, since we're talking about board appointments, uh, you know, we had some issues with that in the past. Since it's, it's mentioned now, does that mean that district commissioner can make that appointment?
Well, we checked in with Mr. Davis before and that came up, and so, in general, it's, it's an understanding that, as you know, that the commissioners have the, have the right to make a recommendation, but it's subject to a final board vote, all of them would be.
But then, but then you take away that commissioner's, that district commissioner's right if he wants someone on a board, and then the other six, five, as what has happened in the past, they come out and say, no, that's not who needs to be there.
Yes, sir, and I understand, I'm, I'm just, I remember Mr. Davis commenting on that, and maybe something we want to talk to him further about, but, but it is, all, all the appointments are subject to full board approval.
Yeah, but, I mean, because the, the committee, e- even if, like I said, if, if I wanted, if Maxie was in my district and if I wanted Maxie, it would still have to come from the selection committee to, um, to bring it before the board, that the recommendation, that's not what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, well, we did it before, I remember one time with Commissioner Bowens was up there, we, just, the good side had it. And, um...
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the good side.
And, and, and what we did...
Talking about the right side?
Yeah, we, we, we actually went and asked Commissioner Bowens, is that, you know, we want it. And, you know, and, but, uh...
But, but, but the committee brings it before the board that this is the recommendation of the committee?
Of the, should be of the commissioner of that, of that district.
That's right, should be that commissioner of that district.
We would ask you...
So, then it doesn't go before the committee, it's just whatever that commissioner wants?
Pretty well.
That was the sticky part, I remember that.
Right.
That was really up to the board of how they wanna decide those to be brought forward. And it, I think it just came down to having to be a full board vote, no matter how you got it here.
Yeah, but, but I, I, and it's just my thought, I, I think that, um, the committee could make, uh, make a recommendation. Now, if you, if you wanted a commissioners on that committee, and you can't lobby for your guy and get the other, at least one more of your committee members to go with you for the person that you want, then...
It's kinda hard against...
Maybe that, maybe that person shouldn't, shouldn't be one.
It's kinda hard when you have one, when you have six against one.
But it, it won't be six against one if, if it's coming from the selection committee, it's three on the committee, right?
Wow, it's like that...
We did the commit, the, the commissioners just, we'll get your input, I mean, obviously, working together, I would...
Anyway.
Whatever you wanted to do, whatever that commissioner would, who would want that person to sit on, from his district.
Yeah.
But, but, and we're gonna take it back to Kelly again to make sure we, but...
Oh, I, yes, sir, I can, uh...
But what Commissioner Stephen is saying...
That's how we did it.
It still would require, does, it does not require the full vote of the commission?
Does require the full board vote. It does require the full, but we're sure that...
But, but Joey, if, if you could let us know which one is a, a district appointment, like I said, it may not be that many, because if, and, and if, I think if it's, if it's like that, you, you kinda limit yourself, especially when we got, um, we got boards out there now that's vacant because we can't find nobody, and then, and then we gonna even tie ourselves down a little tighter by saying it's, he's got to live next door to you, you, you know, when, I mean, within your district.
I will, I will, okay.
Yeah, but I was ju- just talking about the boards and, uh, you know, we, I had to one to resign from the help board because she no lo- it required her to work in Liberty County, which she doesn't work in Liberty County no more, she retired. Um, so, looking into that, but, yeah, I agree with the, the commissioner that they need, whatever the policy says. It, either they live in Liberty County or they work in Liberty County to be on a board.
All right, RFP playground equipment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mosley.
Commissioner's cheering now for you. Mr. Chairman.
About the health department?
Uh, members of the board, we advertised for, uh, playground equipment for Gun Branch. We received eight proposals, uh, from seven vendors, and we evaluate them. Um, we looked, we were looking at a number of things, um, there were, some of them were very good, some of them were kind of, huh, just barely made the, uh, criteria. The one that stood out the most for the money was Hansley Miracle from Flower Ban, Branch. Uh, their price was seventy-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars, fifty-eight cent, they had the highest evaluation of one sixteen. Um, some of the things that we saw with their design is they had five entry points, which means allow more kids to get on, and five exit points allow more kids to get off. It covered a much larger area. Uh, it had a, um, large sunshade that would protect the children as they play. And they also, on the swing set side, they had some good, um, solid poles, uh, provide a lot of durability, and had some, uh, ADA features that we really liked, so this would be the company that we would recommend, uh, for this body.
This playtime?
No, no, sir, I, I messed up, it was actually Hansley, uh, Miracle, if you turn on the back, you can see it in number four. And they had a Flowery Branch, Flowery Branch, Georgia, which is where that was.
All right, Chair, entertain the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve the playground equipment from Hansley Miracle. Item four, for seventy-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty-eight cent.
Second, the motion?
Second.
Second, we approve the bid from Haisley Miracle, seventy-seven thousand, four seventy-seven. Shades over the, over the swing set.
Yes, sir, we got, we kinda...
Move it on.
I, I know.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Could you send a, a picture of that playground?
I would love to, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful, uh...
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is it? Huh? Nice, okay.
Nice, yeah.
It's very nice, mhm.
All, all in favor, show your hands, please.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Mosley, uh, just since you're talking about playground, what's the status on the replacements for Miller Park? Anybody know?
Miss Stevens, it was ordered sometime back, I, I'll, I'll double-check on it, but it was ordered probably a month and a half ago. Had about a sixty to ninety day lullaby time, but I will double-check that tomorrow for you, let you know.
Stand up for everything over there.
Get repaired. All right, administrative?
Mr. Chairman, I had one other thing that, that wanted to discuss with the commission tonight, and it involves a possible amendment to your alcohol ordinance. Um, we've had some desire expressed by some companies that wanna locate, uh, to specific areas, uh, and I won't call any specific tonight, uh, that one of their criteria is that they be able to serve, uh, beer and wine off-premise, for off-premise consumption. Uh, your current ordinance says that, um, on-premise or off-premise cannot be done within three hundred feet of a church. Uh, this area that's proposed falls unfortunately inside that three hundred feet. So, that's what I bring before you tonight, I will tell you, in other jurisdictions, what we're seeing is that they leave the three hundred foot rule in place for on-premise consumption, but they allow that rule to be forgiven, actually amend the ordinance, take that out of that section for off-premise. So, you can go in a minute market and go into, you know, a store and buy that, as long as you don't consume it on-premise, you can take it off. And, um, and it's not really met with any resistance. Indication that we have, uh, from the folks in the area of, of this proposed location is that there is not an issue with that, uh, from that church. So, again, without being specific to any one location, 'cause I don't wanna do that on Facebook tonight necessarily, is, um, is, is to see what the commission's, uh, wishes are on that. I- if you would like to do that, if you think you would like to do that, I can go ahead and get with the county attorney, have him draft some language of ordinance amendment and have that for you at your next meeting, or at least by the first meeting in, in December. And as you know, you're not subject to the rules that cities are, which require, uh, multiple readings of an ordinance change. You could then in fact enact that ordinance to ni- uh, that night if you wanted to, uh, to go into effect, which, which would be pretty good, actually, pretty good timing, 'cause it would be in December, and then the start of the January is when alcoholic beverages licenses are issued, so...
Mr. Chair, I heard you, what you said, Mr. Brown, but just to say it's okay with the church, let's get something in black and white?
Can do that. Well, so, so what we...
We can have, have something...
Yes, sir, so... Yes, sir, so, so, again, it would be a countywide change.
Right.
Uh, it wouldn't be specific to any one location, so, um, while that church is important, I think it's just as important to consider what others may suggest. Okay, so, point well taken there. And again, i- if a project goes forward, this one or others, and, and that ordinance is in effect, uh, or before that ordinance is in effect, you know, you, we, we can, we can make contact with that specific church, again, I get too much of the announcement there, but...
Have two, two, you have the almost preacher back there behind you.
Understand. I understand. Yeah, and we don't...
What I'm saying is, I don't want us to open up a can of worm and then, you know, I wanna make sure we do it, if we're gonna do something, let's do it right, decency and in order, because then the next, then you be going up looking at a school, you know, within that fo- footage of that, okay?
Right, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying, let's make sure that we do it.
Well, so, so again, you know, there'd been some thought or some suggestion that the county had the right to grant variances. Let's say that one certain church didn't mind, or one certain school, or whatever, it didn't mind, uh, but the county alcohol ordinance, there is no variance allowance on alcohol licenses. So, you're gonna have to do that countywide if you're gonna do it, to do that. So, wanna do this, wanna go ahead and, uh, we can double-check again with that one specific site, but I think more in mind is, is what you think countywide, right? And unincorporated areas, what you want countywide, is what would be important. I'll go and get with the county attorney, have him draft some language just so you could see what it would look like. Not to say that you gotta do anything, but I'll at least have that ready, we will canvas that, I'll have someone talk to that specific location.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one more item on, on the, uh, where we, uh, item E, also the, uh, committee, appointment committee, we had an appointment to make this afternoon. Can we do, can we do that, or do we need to, can we go ahead and do that? 'Cause we only had one application, and that was for the Development Authority and Miss Willa...
Mr. John Lewis.
M- Mrs. John Lewis Willa Dixon.
No, it's not, Miss Willa Lewis.
Miss Willa Dixon.
Willa, yeah.
Lewis would like to...
Be reappointed.
Reappointed.
Entertain the motion.
I'll say a motion.
Second.
Secondly, we reappoint Miss Willa Dixon Lewis to the...
That, that's my classmate, okay, that's my classmate.
Oh! All in favor, show your hands. Lucy, you're reappointed. Is that it, sir?
Uh, Mr. Brown? While you're up there, do you have any possible dates yet where we stand on the gym?
I don't, 'cause they, they're going through, they did the initial walkthrough, yes, sir, and I don't know the status of when those items might be corrected, so...
I was playing in the, uh, this past weekend, it's open. You messed up the floor. I, I played a game in there this past weekend, I thought it was open.
Hey, if you played it the weekend, you messed up the floor.
All right. Joey, I'm serious, though, I, I do need another phone thing on top, I don't know what happened. I hit it and it broke off. Let me share this before we close, someone texted me who was live streaming our meeting. Oh, you talked, after, after the meeting, John, we talked to you. You the church representative, well, just gentleman right here. Okay, this is right here, yeah. 'Cause we had to get something official.
Well, well, again, I, Mr. John, it's, there, there's nothing that's really formally been brought, any, in a kind of, any, any kind of, um, permit application or anything that's coming before the commission, that would really be the time, I think, uh, or if the ordinance, you know, if you do consider changing the ordinance, and then that would be on the agenda, and that would be the time to properly address that issue.
A friend texts me, he said, he's watching livestream, he said, make the audience see what you see, keep calm. I didn't know I was not being calm, um, but I thought we did a good job of explaining how we got to this village hearing, uh, and if I didn't do it, I apologize, uh, for that. Uh, but once again, to the citizens, it's, it's been an elongated process.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you was, um, that you didn't maintain your composure, because I got the same message and I didn't say anything.
I got one, too.
I got the same message and I, I didn't open my mouth the whole time, so...
All right, it's not me then, all right. Chair, entertain the motion, Judge Jones.
No move, second.
All right.